Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for showing up. We're going to call our meeting of January 21st to order. We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Morrison, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, first item is roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Okay, we'll go into public participation, and I have a card from... Ryan Handme.
All right. Sorry. Mayor?
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, it's our first time to a city council meeting, so...
Welcome, welcome. Come back some more. Glad to see you.
We will. So, we live on Madison Avenue. I bought the house two and a half years ago. I work up at Boeing, up at the Cape. And we're just concerned about the speed of the traffic coming down Madison Avenue. At the... We're closest to the intersection of Magnolia and Madison, and it's a two-way stop. The cars driving through there sometimes get up to 60 miles an hour. And I know we've talked to the Public Works people before, and they've said that they might not be able to put a stop sign in because you have regulations on how many two-way stops in a row, how many four-way stops in a row down the streets. But we were thinking, maybe we could get a variance for that, or put in a speed hump of some kind, or maybe patrol the street more frequently. I don't know if it's just people that are passing through that neighborhood and going to another neighborhood, or if it's people actually living on the street, not sure who it is. But we'll just look out our window, and there'll be a car just right down the street. And we have a young child, and we're low...
I understand. I appreciate you coming here, because I think, you know, we do have a problem all over, not just on... But it's these backstreets back there. You're on Madison and Magnolia?
Yeah, 317 Madison. It's, you know, one property from the intersection.
All righty, we take note of it, and I'm sure we have people here that are taking notes.
Thank you.
You maybe see something?
Okay. Appreciate it.
I have another card, but that's on item number six, so we'll call that when we get to item six. Okay, council, we move into our consent agenda, close public participation. And our items on the agenda are 1, 2, 3 for approval. Anybody care to pull any items? 1, 2, 3.
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to pull item 1 and number 2.
Items 1 and 2?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion for 3.
I'll make a motion for number 3.
Pass.
I'll second it.
Second. We have a motion on items 3 and 2nd. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kellum, item 1.
Yes, I wanted to just clarify the minutes a little bit, that I'm not Rocky Randall's. I know, that's a clerical word. And then also, on number 3 of the minutes, I just wanted to think, I thought for clarity and transparency, that our names should be in there, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and my name as... So, there is clarity and, you know, transparency for the records that who said what and what happened. I just thought that we should put the names in there. So, that's why I pulled those, that.
We... I guess you have the copy of the corrections?
Yes, and so, do I make a motion that we take, that we... The revised language?
Revised, yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the revised language for the minutes.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on revision of item number 1. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, item number 2. Ms. Kellum.
Yes, I... Looking over this, I was, and I talked to Todd, but I just wanted to clarify it for my own understanding, is the project description meets the FDEP consent order requirements. And then on the... Down on the bottom where it said the items and when they will be completed, the last one says, "under a separate contract." So, I just wanted to clarify why that's not in this contract, and...
Yeah. We did discuss that, and it's a good thing to bring up. Our goal there is that that particular item will be grant-funded, which we've applied for, so it's excluded from the contract that we're approving with this item.
And how much is the... How much is the grant?
I think, Jeff, was it up to $75,000?
$750,000.
$750,000, right. Got a decimal point on.
And what's the time on that? Will it be by 2021, or...
It's being designed now. It's scheduled to go out to bid, you know, late this year.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because it didn't make sense to me, so...
I just have one other question. Are we applying for some of the grants through the Indian River Lagoon Fund and also through Florida League of Cities for some of this?
This $750,000 is through the state legislature.
Yes.
But no... Nothing from the Indian River Lagoon on this one.
What about the Florida League of Cities? Because anything having to do with water treatment and sewage...
No, we did not look at that.
Can we?
Sure.
Thank you.
There's still time.
Thank you.
So, the proposal on the contract covers the four items. That would be the installing of various nutrient probes, installing the variable frequency drives, replacing the RES flow meter, and installing the permanent carbon feed system.
So, I make a motion that we accept Agenda Item 2?
You make a motion to accept item 2? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mrs. Raymond again, to accept item 2. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, we'll move to item 4. Public hearings. Ordinance number 19-2019. Site plan review, second reading. Mr. Garganese.
Okay, this is second and final reading of ordinance 19-2019, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending the city's site plan review requirements of the Chapter 110 zoning of the city code, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. It's also a public hearing item. After first reading, based on the comments and direction of the council, we made a few amendments to the ordinance for consideration during second reading. One of the items that we added was a sliding scale that is based on property size on page 2 of the ordinance. And I think we added just a clarification that staff decisions on proposed minor amendments shall be in writing, and the planning and zoning board shall be provided written notice of such decision as part of the board's regular meeting. And just one, with respect to the sliding scale, the language decreased, increased, otherwise modified in past tense, that really should be just present tense, decrease, increase, or otherwise modify. Other than that, the language is acceptable to me, at least. Mayor?
Thank you. This was brought up last meeting, and we had on our overview page the percentage slide scale, what he discussed, and it's also in the... It's in the ordinance as requested.
And if I could clarify, Mayor, I met with all the council members, including Councilmember Kellum, and she asked for this clarification. I think it's a good idea that we put this language in on Section 110, 221B, so this is on page 2 of 7 of the ordinance. On item B, where it says, "Staff review under Section 110, 223 is also required for minor amendments to a site plan. However, planning and zoning board review is not required for such minor amendments." The friendly amendment we'd like to add there, just for clarification, is after the word "however," we'll put "at the discretion of the community development director." Planning and zoning board review under Section 223 is not required. So, what that does, it gives the director the authority to approve a minor amendment, but also gives the flexibility to take a minor amendment to the planning and zoning board, if in his discretion he feels it's warranted. Such an item might be something that is minor in terms of size, but it could have a community impact. So, this way, he's got both tools. It could go or doesn't have to if it's really significantly minor. So, the amendment, again, would be after the word "however," comma, "at the discretion of the community development director," comma, "planning and zoning board review." Just the insertion of those five words. Or actually, seven words.
Mr. Dickey, in other words.
Yes.
Currently, it would be.
Yeah, in this case.
Yeah.
So, everybody understands the loophole that been filled. That's good. I think that's good. Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
We've discussed that.
We got consensus on it?
We've discussed it with Anthony, and I believe Anthony's good with it, too.
I'm good with it. I mean, the directors have to be governed by the sliding scale.
We don't need to go back and come back for another reading. We can do that.
No, no, sir.
That minor enough to do it, so we can do it. Based consensus-wise, we have it, so we just need a motion to... Anybody else have any discussion on this?
Public hearing.
Before we go to the public? Everybody got that clarified, so... Okay, we'll open public hearing on ordinance number 19-2019. That's item number 4. Does anybody... We don't have any cards, but I need to ask. Nobody wants to discuss, we'll close public hearing. Bring it back to the council. No more discussion, we can look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept ordinance number 19-2019 as written, and with the friendly amendment, and with the friendly comments.
I'll second it.
With the change.
With the verbiage with Mr. Dickey.
I'll second it.
Okay, covered it all. We got a motion and a second for ordinance numbers 19-2019. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Item number 5 is ordinance 20-2019, amending the city code, Chapter 110. Second reading, Mr. Garganese.
This is second and final reading of ordinance number 20-2019. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending the city code, Chapter 110 zoning regarding tattoo establishments and body piercing salons required to be licensed under Chapter 381 Florida statutes, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability, and an effective date. Again, this is second and final reading, also a public hearing item. After the first reading, based on the council's direction, there was an amendment to the ordinance for consideration this evening. If you recall, the council indicated a desire to keep tattoo establishments and body piercing salons as a permitted use under the M1 zoning district. So, that was accomplished on page 4 of 5 of the ordinance. However, I made some conforming amendments, so it mirrors up with the language that we used for this... The proposed language for the C1, C2 zoning district, and also the 100-foot distance requirement from pre-existing residential uses or designated residential on the city's future land use or zoning map. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, this was in M1 only, and we're bringing it out for C1, C2? The amendment that was put in is in there. Anybody have any questions, discussion?
It's still in that one section of the C1 by... Mr. Dickey was explaining it to us, it had to be by Church Street or where the church is. It's still that, right? Okay.
South of Church.
South.
Yes.
South of Church, North Atlantic, that property would be eligible.
Okay. That's my only question.
We go to public hearing. This is open to the public, if you want to ask any questions on it. We just moved tattoo parlors out of the M1 district to two different districts, along leaving them in the same district that they were located. Basically, what it is in a nutshell. Anybody have any questions or discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll close public hearing. Bring it back to the council for a motion or more discussion. Item number 5.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I move that we pass ordinance number 19-2019.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to pass ordinance 2019. 20-2019. And we have a second. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, item number 6. Ordinance number 01-2020.
Hey, ordinance...
First reading.
Ordinance 01-2020, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending the city code to establish locational, design, and operational requirements for self-service storage facilities within the city, adopting conforming amendments to the zoning code, including revising definitions and existing storage regulations, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance. This ordinance was presented to the city's land planning agency back in August of last year. The planning agency recommended approval of the ordinance. The ordinance, as the title indicates, modifies the definition of mini self-storage that's currently in the code and gives it more of a common, today, modern definition. It'll be called self-service storage facilities, with a very basic definition as an establishment containing separate storage spaces that are leased or rented to customers as individual units. The term today is synonymous with mini warehouses, mini storage, self-storage facilities, and self-storage warehouses. This ordinance would add that use as a special exception in the C2 zoning district. In addition, it would make some conforming amendments to the M1 light industrial district, which currently describes that use as a mini storage and storage garage. The conforming amendment adds the new definition under the list of uses. And more importantly, in greater detail, this ordinance establishes some supplemental zoning regulations for self-storage, self-service storage facilities, and there are design standards that are proposed. Basically, this is proposing how a facility will look and be laid out from a design standpoint. And if... And additionally, the ordinance lays out several operational requirements for these self-service storage facilities. For example, dealing with what we would think of some common sense regulations that don't currently exist, such as, you know, keeping animals in self-storage facilities would be prohibited, you know, storing explosives and, you know, in operational hours, et cetera, are being proposed for these facilities, just as a, you know, guidance and an enforcement tool. Be happy to answer any specific questions you may have regarding the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. We're looking at putting storage facilities into C2 districts.
My concern is that we have a lot of C2 districts here, as I understand, in the pink. And I'm not sure if this is a good idea, because then it may set precedence for other mini storage units. And I really don't think, after we've spent time trying to clean up the city, trying to improve the appearance, that we're going to want that. We've had problems with storage units in the past, with people living in them, having offices there. Animals, yes, I've seen animals. I've seen garage sales down on Point Setia recently, and I think that this is not the right place for it. I think that originally, the zoning was meant to put it in the industrial areas, to keep it in a certain area. I don't think we need that on Center Street at this time. It's a very small street, if you take it from the river up to A1A. I don't think we need the added traffic there. We have 80 residential units on the riverside, salon on the river, and we have very few commercial buildings and light industry there, which is fine. And I really don't think, I mean, since we have the residential and we also have the park, Center Street Park there, which is one of our parks along the river for people to appreciate the manatees and dolphins and the wildlife. I don't think it would be appropriate to put it there at all. I think it belongs in the industrial. I think that's why we made it that way originally. It should be kept in that area.
Mickey?
Yes, I have a question, probably for Anthony. It says in here that, right now, when you look at the picture of it, there's a lot of outside storage. And in here, it says that outside storage will not be allowed. Is that going to change? Is he going to be able to keep the outside storage and add?
Good question.
There's a lot of boats and trailers and...
People living there, in certain trailers there, on that property.
No, I mean boat trailers and boats.
There are people living in some of the trailers there.
It says, "All goods and property shall be stored in enclosed building. Outside, outdoor storage of goods and properties shall be prohibited."
Dave, you can chime in, too, here.
Yeah.
I mean, the intent is to define a use called self-service storage facilities for storage of household items in enclosed structures.
Well, what I'm saying is that, will that go away?
Well, typically, what happens when we... When the city is revising its code, that uses that are no longer permitted under the new code section become non-conforming. So, they're continued... They're allowed to continue under the rights that the code gives non-conforming uses. So, they can't expand, they can't, you know, there's certain things they can and can't do under that non-conforming classification. So, yeah, the outside storage isn't going to go away overnight because the council adopts this ordinance. However, you know, I think the real thing to keep in mind in here, this is a redevelopment incentive. This language is here to incentivize the redevelopment in some of our storage facilities. And as we all know, some of them are eyesores. And the quick way to get some of these redeveloped and get rid of some of that outside storage and other things would be to say, "Okay, Mr. Property Owner, you can do this. These are the things, these are all the new requirements you have to meet under the operational requirements and the design standards. So, it's going to look a lot nicer than what we have." So, it's really a carrot. We're putting a carrot out there for property owners to redevelop some of these eyesores. Know they're not going to go away overnight, but this is... This is one approach.
How do you know that it will be taken care of, the outside storage?
How do...
I mean, he could still have inside storage and outside storage.
I'll take a stab at that. As Anthony said, we're looking at approving an ordinance for the C2 district. This doesn't apply necessarily to any particular property. It happens to be that the applicant owns property on Center Street. The question is, what happens to that outside storage special exception? That's not really a question, I think, before this council tonight. That would more appropriately belong to the planning and zoning board and the Board of Adjustment if that applicant pursues a special exception approved under this ordinance. So, I think this is not the appropriate time to discuss it as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I'll briefly make, kind of piggyback on what Todd mentioned. You know, a special exception, there's a lot of give and take. There's a lot of negotiations that go on between the city and the property owner when they're going through the special exception process. And so, you know, the outside storage is an item that could potentially come up during our discussions with a property owner, like, hmm, you know, I'm not going to... There's a lot of hypotheticals out there and what ifs, but, you know, that's... All I can say is that is a typical part of the special exception process, is to negotiate with...
How many units does this man have planned for there, for that space?
That is something that would... That the city would address during the special exception process. And so, we're... And as Todd said, we're trying not to focus on any one particular piece of property. This is really more of a larger policy, text decision and discussion we're having here tonight.
Well, then, why did you put the address there?
That was the address of the applicant.
So, you're saying, then, that all of these light pink, the C2, could possibly be mini storage units? Is that what you're saying?
If approved by special...
If approved this ordinance.
Right. And it would have to... And again, now, we would have to go through a special exception process, which, you know, the whole reason for special exception process, and I know the mayor has feelings about special exceptions, but the special exception processes for certain type uses that perhaps warrant a higher level of community discussion and input, that's why. And a special exception goes to P and Z first, and then it goes to the Board of Adjustment. So, there's an opportunity for the public to get involved and to discuss it, rather than just a staff person saying, "approved."
If I read this correctly, then, we could have mini storage along this area of A1A?
That is, yes.
Is that correct?
That would be an eligible location for a special exception. I'm not sitting here telling you that every one of... Every area that's shown in pink on that map is going to have a...
No, but it could.
It doesn't...
It could be eligible to request for one.
Well, the ordinance...
Well, then, we're setting a precedence here. When we do the... If we vote, if we vote for this, in favor of this, we're setting a precedence, and we could possibly have a lot of mini storage units. And they might look wonderful, they might. Is that correct?
You're... Well, let's put it this way. Mini storage facilities are currently not authorized use, right, in C2 zoning? It's not that technically you're... It's somewhat the presidential, and what's before you is a proposed new law that would afford somebody the opportunity to apply for a special exception for many, many storage, self-storage, in, the way it's written right now, the C2 zoning district and the M1 zoning district. So, Dave's right, they would have to go through a whole special exception process only if the council were authorized that use as being a possibility. Now, the ordinance as written requires a minimum lot size of 1 and 1/2 acres for a property to be even eligible to apply for mini, for mini self-storage. That was a threshold that was, I guess, discussed and we added to the ordinance. So, not every property in the pink, I'm sure, is 1 and 1/2 acres. But, be it as it may, you are correct. This is opening up the possibility that this type of use could go in the pink shaded area on your zoning map currently. on your zoning map currently. You know, another, another point that, that needs to be made, that, and I'm not advocating one way or another, the design standards are intended to be modern. The modern trend for self, these self-storage facilities is for these facilities to look like an office building. Many cases, you won't even be able to discern the difference between an office building and, and one of these establishments if they're built according to those design standards. I'm not, again, I'm not advocating one way or another, but there's a high, the ordinance is intended to create a higher design standard than what currently exists in the city's code for these types of facilities.
All right. One more general question. How many storage units would you put, then, on one acre of land? For example? Do you have any idea? I'm just curious.
How many units would go on a one acre, one and a half acre parcel?
Yes, if you're building a mini storage unit on one acre of land.
It depends on your minimum bulk regulations. What I mean by that is, if you had a minimum one and a half acres, that defines, that defines the, the land, okay? Then, on top of that, it has to be a multi-story building. I've seen some cities actually impose a height limitation, so you can only go so far hot, so far up, right? And then it has to be a minimum of 300 square, I'm sorry, a maximum of 300 square feet per unit. So when you do, I'm not, can't do all the math here tonight, but there's a way to kind of do all the math, depending on the size of a piece of property. But, you know, depending on, you know, the desire of the legislative body, the council, you can, you can play with those numbers that, you know, will limit the, the number of units or have put a hard cap in, 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 in the ordinance, like a not to exceed number of units to keep the size of, of the facility within scale of the community. I've seen that in other ordinances. So just some comments.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just my feedback here when reviewing it is, you know, storage units serve a, create a lot of value for people. And when you talk, think about the conversation we had about affordable housing. If you think about a mother-in-law or someone trying to move back in in a single-family home, storage units allow people to live in smaller places. They allow for more affordable housing in that respect. And these are the little types of things that we can do to help. I do, in respect, understand the concerns that Councilmember Raymond brought up, and we see it, it's, you know, it's, it's evident that these things can happen. But I also recognize what staff did here in this policy before us is, when you, when you filter out the properties due to the lot size and really look at what's available, there's not a lot of opportunities. And then if they do qualify, the risk is still high. To, to David Dickey's point, that there's a lot of discretion, and while special exceptions have certainly put a bad taste in the mayor's mouth, and I get it, especially when you look at the big mastery development we're going through, a rezoning project, and Mayor Hoag's lived here long enough to see that evolution, I, I respect that too. But I think that this, the way I read it and understand it, addresses a lot of those concerns, puts a lot of control back to prevent it. And the design standards, if I'm a storage unit, if I own one of those properties, this is not, you know, permitted as, by right. I mean, there, you, it's a special exception, they have to go through a lot, and it's going to take some investment to meet these standards and that modern look like our city attorney explained. So I think they overcome a lot of the concerns and the extreme example of, look, every one of these could become, you know, a, a storage unit isn't realistic just from a market standpoint. I don't see that the supply and the demand would match up there. But if it, if it did in that exaggerated example, I think we would, we'd have to ask ourselves why that happened. And I don't know if there's that big of a demand in the area. And if you go back, they were allowed in this area, correct me if I'm wrong. So when you say, "the way it's always been and started," it actually was allowed in the commercial district. And I think it was moved, I don't know when, back recently. And this is an opportunity, I think, to really, you know, raise the, the zoning requirements on what's required from an aesthetics and design perspective, while also taking this, when I hear special exception, it's really on a case-by-case basis, to be able to look at it. And so we get two readings at this, we get the chance to engage the public. I'm sensitive, I'm still open to change my mind. But as of today, I think it, the ordinance is written in a way that, that is favorable and allows property owners to get the, you know, economic development going in the area, create jobs, and get the properties moving in a positive direction. So I see property improvement here, that if they want to take advantage of this, it's going to end up in, in a nicer-looking outcome for the city and everyone it impacts. Thank you.
Well, I think, I think there is a need for the, the storage facilities. My question is, we've had some issues with storage facilities in the past, and the maintenance and the enforcement of keeping them aesthetically or keeping them properly maintained. And I'm looking at the, the code for building, and you mentioned in here on page two of four, you keep mentioning, when it's constructed, "it's constructed of high-quality material." You put in there, "surfaced in high-quality material, and all materials shall be of high quality." That's kind of ambiguous. When you say high quality, what are we actually referring to? And how do you enforce something that's not of high quality?
Yeah. Do you want me to respond? And I'll ask the city attorney to jump in, since he was certainly involved in crafting this language. Yeah, we're, I'm going to be referring to paragraph nine on page two of four, down towards the bottom of the page. "The facade of the storage facility building shall be, shall have exterior vertical surfaces covered by a material or combination of materials such as," and that's the key language, "such as decorative brick veneer, stone, stucco, textured block, or similar decorative materials. All materials shall be of high quality." Yeah, I mean, that is, that is somewhat ambiguous. And I think, you know, if, if sitting here this evening, we can't contemplate and anticipate all building materials that may be proposed and may be used. There may be something in five years from now, some new building techniques and materials that, that come on the market and become accepted. So I think what this language is, is it's maintaining flexibility for the city to implement this. Certainly, that, the, the first sentence in that paragraph is, is pretty specific as, as to what the intent of, of that language is for. You know, what we don't want is someone to put up used plywood on the, on the, you know, upon the, or unfinished cinder block. So we want it to be of high quality, we want it to be, you know, so, yes, it is, I will agree with you, Mr. Brown, it is ambiguous, but there's a, there's a, there's a reason for it.
Okay, I agree. On paragraph six, when you talk about fences and walls, including entry gates shall be constructed of high-quality materials, there's nothing worse than looking at a fence that's rusted away and it brings down the neighborhood, brings down a, a area. What can you do to prevent something like that when somebody builds or has fencing and gates? I don't know what a high-quality gate is or what it shall be composed of or constructed of.
Yeah.
Well, I think you called out aluminum fencing, they do not like the black fencing. I mean, the intent of the language is, is to make it, and I hear you, and I, and I agree, like, what, what rises to the level of high quality? You know, aesthetic review is still going to be built into the process, it's going to have to go to the Community Appearance Board for approval. In addition, the language is written, when the request came in, is written to try to write it to the modern standards of these self-service storage facilities, not the old standard of doing this type of construction. And the, the city has a form-based EOD code. It probably, if this passes first reading and moves on, or you want us to make some tweaks to this ordinance before you consider it again, we could add some form-based pictures of what we're trying to, you know, get to with this language. And put pictures of the modern self-service storage facility as, as a guide as to what is going to be expected of developers. Because the ordinance also says that self-storage facilities are permitted only as, only in multi-storage structures, designed to emulate office buildings compatible and in harmony with applicable aesthetic standards of the city and the EOD. So it has to, it has to build, they would have to build to those EOD standards, and it's going to have to emulate an office building. It's going to have to look like an office building. And, you know, if we, if we had some pictures of what we're trying to describe in the agenda item, it might be helpful to, to clear up some of the ambiguousness of the text in, in the ordinance.
As you know, just as well as I do, once something is built, trying to make changes to it when we could have done something at the onset, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
I'm still worried about it. I think a storage unit is a storage unit, is a storage unit. And I understand, I have seen some of the storage units that look like office buildings. However, when I look at this, and the light pink here, the entrance to Cape Canaveral and the possibility that we have some of these storage units entering, while we enter our city, really is upsetting to me, after what we've tried to do to clean up. And I know, you say, it might even be clad in gold, but it's still a storage unit. I'm not in favor of this.
I'm going to speak, and I'm, I'm not in favor of it, but I'm going to tell you why I'm not in favor of it. As David well pointed, I'm totally against special exceptions in the city. All these storage units that are existing were basically special exceptions. Because residential area was all along North Atlantic, down around Central, where we're trying to keep a town center to come in. That would open that up for storage units, all where you want to build town center. Yeah, you can put these things into where they're pretty. The ones all around town were all pretty when they were built, but there was a, been a lack of aesthetics enforcement. That old building that's sitting on the corner of Church Street in A1A, that used to be a real pretty building, was all corrugated metal, used to be a grocery store many years ago. But it's in disrepair, it hasn't been taken care of. All the warehouses that are in this city were basically put under a special exception. Point Setta Avenue, special exception.
Poor George.
Chan, or Central Avenue, North Atlantic, special exception. All those were special exceptions. Doesn't make any difference how they got here, it's what they are once they get there. And then, and here it's got, yes, it's got a lot of things about enclosed, making it enclosed is more susceptible to living in it, because now you can't be seen. Where you see these fellows going in and out of these other places at 2:00 in the morning, you know they're living in there. But once the gate's locked and you're inside, nobody knows you're in there. So I, I know what we're trying to do, or what this gentleman or whoever's trying to do. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, it's in the right place. And I think where they're zoned far today is in the right place, up around the port, north into the city, up there where you have this type of need. And there is a need for them, I, I know there's a need for them. Personally, I know there's a need. But I, I just don't think it needs to be where we're trying to beautify things to put and open, open it up for that zoning. Yeah, there can be times when you can say you can't get your special exception because some other reason. But I, I just don't think we need to open that box up again for special exceptions. We've got a lot of control on it, where we got things that are coming in to the city that will make it a lot nicer. And putting these things along A1A, that's where they'd be going, right up Center Avenue. So I'm not going to support it for the reason that I think special exceptions have made the city in the past is what it is, spot zoning. You look and it's just a mismatch of everything, and that's why, because of special exceptions. So I'm, I'm not going to support it, we can wordsmith it all you need to, I won't vote for it.
Okay.
That's what I say. So counsel has anything else to add?
I do. I have a question for Mr. Dickey. If, if we, if we don't change, if we don't give a special except, exception, and we don't change it, that property stays the way it is? And how are we going to beautify it with the way it is?
Code enforcement.
Well, there's, there's, you can put, I won't use that term, lipstick on something. But there, there is a, you know, as, as the mayor says, if, if you're familiar with some of these properties around the city, there's not much you can do with, Frank.
Well, that, I, I mean, I looked on, went down there and took a look at it, and, I mean, he's allowed to have outsourced, outdoor storage.
Yeah, it was approved as part of the special exception.
Special exception.
But I mean, how do we do that with code enforcement? How do we make them not have that?
There's certain criteria that that one, there are certain criteria that all special exceptions went in under. Disrepair and not in repair, they can take the special exception by code, they can take it. But we got to have...
The proposed language would result in a fundamentally different type of building than what we have out on the street today. That's the bottom line. And that's why we wrote it this way. And as I said earlier, this is a carrot to get people to redevelop these properties. So, but again, if the council, you know, it's completely...
Am I, am I wrong in saying, under the special exception, that they were granted? Many of them I've been remembering, that they had criteria they had to live to, otherwise that special exception can be withdrawn.
That is correct, Mayor. If they do not comply with the special exception conditions, the city can...
If we got buildings that are falling apart, you can see raccoons running in and out of them at night or whatever, those need attention by code enforcement. And that would...
Well, yeah.
Do what you're trying to say, this is going, I don't believe that this will help the areas that we, I don't want to talk about the areas that...
Right. This isn't about a particular piece of property.
This won't help that. What'll help that is code enforcement.
Well, okay.
To clean up.
Okay.
This isn't going to help it. They can do it if they want to, or they can just let it sit there and fall apart, and then it's, in disrepair, it has to go. But this ordinance here won't make certain areas clean up that are in disrepair.
Yeah.
I know one that definitely won't. It can't be helped. But I don't want to go there, but I'm just saying, I am not going to support it because we can write all these ordinances and make it look cherry pie, but it's not going to work.
My issue is that some of these people have not been good stewards of their property. I mean, I've had property, and I take good care of my property, and I expect everybody to. It breaks my heart, I have to say this. It breaks my heart to go by George and Patty's house at Point Setia and Pierce.
Yeah.
And across the street, they have to look at that storage unit, that is a disaster. People having garage sales there, people going in and out of there. I don't know what they have in there going on, but I see a lot, I go back and forth on my bike almost daily.
Yeah.
To and from, and to and...
That's, that's...
It's sad. And I don't think it's fair, especially for residential people to have to suffer like that. They have a beautiful home, George and Patty have kept it up there, and they have to look at that every day.
Well, and, and just my final comment, and then I'm going to shut up, is this is really about economics. You know, if, if you have a, if you have a facility that we're all talking about down here on Point Setta that looks like that, you're going to charge a certain amount. If you have a new state-of-the-art facility, you're going to be able to charge, charge a certain amount. So it's, you know, it's just, and we're trying to, we're trying to raise things here.
I understand that part, but I still think it's setting a precedence. I, I'm 100% in agreement with the mayor.
Okay.
No.
I promise to be quiet now, and I will.
Is there, has there been any code violations at, in that area for that property? I mean...
Are we talking about Center Street?
Yes. Yes.
Are you aware of any code enforcement violations on Center Street there, in that property?
Ooh. I'm not, I don't have any direct knowledge. I'm not saying there isn't any, but I'd have to go look.
And this ordinance doesn't deal with that piece of property, so we're getting way off track actually with that line of questioning.
Well, I'm just, I just think that.
Right. But this is for the C2 district we're talking about. The whole C2 district.
Well, my point is, the mayor says that, you know, we can fix it with code enforcement. Well, why haven't we fixed it with code enforcement?
Well, I promised to be quiet, but this is, I'm specifically answering a question here. That project was approved through a special exception. And as part of that special exception, they were allowed to have outside storage. So.
Maintain in such a fashion, blah, 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 blah.
So, you know.
So my point is, it's never going to get any better the way it is.
We can do a top-to-bottom code enforcement sweep of that property, or any property that has outside storage, to make sure that they comply with the outside storage special exception that they were granted.
Right.
That has nothing to do with this ordinance. And in fact, we will talk about that tomorrow on our staff meeting, about outside storage special exceptions throughout the city, and code enforcement at all of them. But we're dealing with this ordinance in the C2 district right now.
My take on it is, that's what brings about the problems.
Potential problems.
You know, I can remember when, I can remember when they built them on Center Avenue, and I can remember Imperial and all that. They were very nice-looking buildings. Back in behind Imperial, we got that nice bakery back there and everything. I can remember when they built all that stuff. But yeah, it was all nice at one time. But after lack of care and maintenance, or whatever, they become deplorable to look at. So I don't care. And then having them where you can't really see the doors, and blah, 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 it's all enclosed, now you get, I think you're just bringing on secret problems for the guys in green. So I just, I'm against, I'm not going to support it. I just don't like special exceptions, because they get you in trouble. Everything, most of the problems we got in the city are special exceptions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Have any other comments?
Yeah, I think council brought up some good dialogue here that's triggered some things in my mind. I think that there is some mixing going on. The way that this special exception is written, again, I don't think, I think avoids those pains that you're laying out. And so, to say that buildings, you know, deteriorate, and that's, I think how code enforcement got brought on, and that's a separate, we're mixing here, that's a separate issue, code enforcement. I think that, I remember that, that store you mentioned, it was a storekeeper by the sea, I think, on Center Street, or Church Street there. My grandpa worked at that store back in the late, early 60s. And it was beautiful, but that's not, is that a reason to pick on special exceptions?
No, no, no. No, special exceptions, I don't want to, I could go on all night about special exceptions, and what they've done to this city.
This one, though, do you see something in this one that?
Yes, I see it, yeah.
Well, I think you're, with the storage units, which is relevant, because that's what this one is about, if I understand you, you want to, it's as simple as this, you want to keep them in the industrials.
I'm going to put it in a nutshell. You're asking to do something that's not allowed. That's what, that's what a special exception is. You're asking, let me do that, it's not allowed, but let me do it.
Well, it's saying, it's saying, it's an authorized use on a case-by-case basis. And the great points that Mayor Pro Tim Brown brought up was, you know, quality, which is, I agree, that that puts, you know, the appearance board that we appoint, we hope that they look at quality in a good way, and we hope that they honor this modern code the way it's written. I see it as a carrot, as a tool to stimulate and to create, and if the 20-something parcels here that I'm counting, you know, if a nice one comes in, it's going to create a lot of value for the local residents. The aesthetics will look nice, I mean, and hey, just maybe it puts those competitive storage units out of business. And if they redevelop, they're going to have to work within these new codes. And so, to Councilmember Kellum's point, this is a way to stimulate, and I think, improve when I read it. And I think the pain in the past with special exceptions are valid. But the way this one's written, there is a reason you would want a special exception, but what I've learned is that you have to be careful with how you write that code. Because it can be taken advantage of for all the purposes that we've seen. And this one does not scare me. It's in this limited area, it might pull it off from across the street in Mr. and Ms. Sweetman's house. You know, maybe they relocate and take advantage of this to get more activity. But I do want to dig in deeper and look at those, and make sure we don't have blind spots, mayor, because you're right. If there's an area to be taken advantage of, we can. But to say that buildings sit there and dilapidate and fall apart is not a special exception issue, in my opinion, with the way this one's written, that that just happens. That's, we need to go back to our code enforcement and listen to them and say, hey, can we make our code tighter? And I think we just did that with the big revision, and over time, I think we'll have that, those things tighten up. But that's my comments.
Yeah, it's an argument, but it doesn't really, you can take this right here and build that facility, and I can still pull off all the problems that you got with one sitting anywhere else. It ain't going to change. It's not going to make any difference.
Would you favor?
What's going to make a difference, the appearance?
I think that that was your concern.
The activity that takes places within the ones that are out there now that were nice years ago, there are not, some of them that don't look that bad. Imperial Street's got nice units back there, but there's more going on back there that is not just, there's cars. You can go back in some of those places that got the high bay areas, there's a guy back there that's probably got 30 cars packed in there on lifts. That's not allowed. There's gasoline.
But our job is to make this policy, and the way this policy's written, I disagree with you. You, what I'm hearing out of you is, no matter what we write here, because the way this written, it addresses the aesthetic issues, it addresses the use issues, you're demonstrating a lack of execution, that we're going to write it, and yes, if they follow the letter of the law, it'll be good, but code enforcement and/or our, you know, Sheriff's Department won't be able to execute on enforcing it? Is that the problem?
Basically.
Okay, well.
That's one of them. That's one, that's one of them. Not only.
We can, I'm willing to work on that side of the problem and listen to ideas, but I don't think that that means we need to, you know, wave the wand and say no special exceptions.
I don't think this is going to be an economic tool personally, like you're thinking it's going to be. I personally don't believe that. And another factor is, you got property, let's just take the little section of town center area down along Central Avenue between there and A1A. That's all C2. That's where you want to put your town center. Now, where am I, where are you going to be able to stop me? You gave it to the guy over here on A1A, and I want to do it right there on Oak Manor Trailer Park property, where we got a town center, which I understand might be coming under contract again for a town center. How are you going to stop me from putting it there?
Do you favor?
Where is it?
Right here on Central.
Right next to the lumberyard, north, or what is it?
He's on Center.
Okay. That's where you're going to put your town center. Now, I want to come in tomorrow, and I'm going to apply to put some warehouses right there. Are you going to stop me?
Where the lumberyard is?
Next to the lumberyard.
Some townhouses, or some storage?
Storage units. That's where you're going to build the town center.
If I read these aesthetics here, the way it is compared in the lumberyard, the property owner wants to sell it, it sounds like if they build what I'm reading, that's going to be a dramatic improvement to that property.
A storage unit would be a dramatic improvement to the lumberyard, I agree with you. But I don't think it needs to go there, because that's where your town center's going to be.
Well, then we got, that's not.
Or where we're trying to put a town center.
Then that's a different problem. That's not what we're voting in tonight.
Well, that's not, that's not a different problem.
We need to buy the land, then.
How are you going to tell me I can't do it if I want to do it?
I, that, we can add that, I mean, you want to put, there's ways that we can write the code to do that. But if you're, well, if we want to do a town center there, do you want to buy the land for the public? You sure, do you want to stimulate a downtown?
I'm just telling you, that is where you're going to put your town center. We've all been through this for months and years. And that is in the district of where we're talking about, you will allow a warehouse to go. And that property is maybe coming under contract for purchase.
I would.
And then, you want to build a warehouse there.
And would you favor it along A1A? Because it would be approved there, too. That's my problem.
I think there, I think personally, where they belong, as in the zoning, is where they belong.
In industrial, I agree.
Up in the blue. That's where they belong.
Purple.
And they were put there years ago because of the problem that they have, and we have with them. And bringing on a new ordinance and all this brick and mortar and blah, 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 some of them are built out of brick and mortar over on Central Avenue, or Imperial Avenue. They don't look bad. They're nice, they're well-kept. The guy takes care of them. Some of them they don't take care of. And those are right out in the open, you can see it. But nothing gets done about, hey, you're on a special exception, take care of it. You went in on a special exception. We got a lot of things around here on special exception that ruined our city.
If.
It's just a.
No, and you bring up, how would you stop it, is an excellent question, David. I know you're trying to stop talking, but I have a question for you, if you don't mind, please. The, how would you answer that question? How would you stop it? Under the special exception, you know, the intent was to do a town center, is this the point to where staff says, we want to do a town center here, and the planning and zoning, and the appearance board, you know?
I mean, we kind of wrestle with this issue all the time. I mean, you know, we have plans and ideas on what should go where. But if a property owner wants to do something allowed under the zoning ordinance, and we say, no, you can't do that, that puts the city in a kind of a bad situation. We, I think like you were inferring a little while ago, Wes, that puts the city in going out and start buying up property, if we want something specific to happen on a specific piece of property. So, you know, again, I'm just going to get back to it. This is, you know, special exceptions are case by case. If it doesn't, if it's not appropriate on Astronaut Boulevard, then there's reasons that we would deny it. We would deny the special exception request.
So appropriate, another ambiguous word.
Right.
But if it's for the mayor's reasons to say, hey, the town center was in this district, is the way this written, and maybe this is a question for Anthony, is that, you know, a legal way to decline?
I think so.
Anything?
Only.
Oh, I understand, but it's also special exception, that, you know, we do not approve this special exception because this is where the town center would go. Is that, is that an issue?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's exactly explicit criteria in the special exception conditional use section of the code. There's a laundry list of criteria that would have to be applied by the board, whether or not to grant a special exception. And I don't, I don't think there's a provision that says it can't go in that specific location because it might be a town center there. So that's not explicit. But compatibility, harmony, traffic, right, aesthetics, those are all part of the criteria on special exception.
Okay.
And can be a basis to deny if the board in its discretion believes, you know, the evidence doesn't support the application, right? They can't meet the criteria. You know, keep, I just want to just keep in mind, there's a lot of discussion about the C2 zoning district. One aspect of this ordinance is to allow, is proposing to allow this type of use in C2. But the other aspect of this ordinance is to clarify the definition of the use. The use is currently allowed in the M1 zoning district now. So there are other aspects of this ordinance beyond just the C2 zoning district. And the other, the other aspect is design requirements and operational requirements that don't currently exist today if somebody wanted to come in and build a self-service storage facility in the M1 zoning district. There are no such design or operational requirements in the code as a matter of policy. Something to think about?
Well, that's a, that's a good point. And so if we wanted to, you know, unless, without rezoning another special business district and redefining the zoning, kind of like the economic overlay with exactly what we want there, which would say, no, you know, storage units or self-service storage like this. You answered my question on that side. Ignoring the C2 side, does this council agree that within the M1, if they stay there, that these design and aesthetic improvements are worthy? So if, in the event that it, we stroke, strike through the C2 section, but within the M1 made these improvements from where I think everyone agrees they should?
Yes.
I think what we're saying is, consider approving from Section 110352 through 110459 as written. That's on page three of seven of the ordinance. Yeah. So everything on that page and following.
It's everything but the C2.
Everything but the C2.
If the council were inclined to move this along without opening up C2, then we could strike the C2 revisions to the code, and then everything else would stay, and then we could conduct a second reading on the rest of the ordinance. Or if you're not inclined to, you know, pass this, that's your prerogative, of course.
No, I think, I don't have a problem with making nice buildings, but I think nice buildings need to be where they need to be. And you can build a nice storage facility, and you can put that in M1, you can do this ordinance in M1, as far as I'm concerned, I'd support that all day long. But I don't want to support something that I can see this later, I can guarantee you will be a future, just like 50 years ago. Oh, it's a nice-looking building, it's a problem. Because of where it's at, it doesn't need to be there. We ruined North Atlantic Avenue with special exceptions. That was all residential one time, but it's all commercial, basically. Our residential was commercial at one time, and now it's all basically residential. But there's spot zoning in there with a couple buildings, Circle K, gas station, old repair gas station, Dave's Auto Place, all those were special exceptions. Those weren't zoned for that. And that's what we wound up with, was that kind of hodgepodge. And then now you're going to try to move it back out on A1A, where we stopped it on A1A, all the condos being built on A1A because they were ruining the corridor. You weren't having a commercial district no more. Central Avenue is virgin property, you might say, other than one commercial building there. And on the corner of the real estate. But those, those places, you don't want to start putting in something that's going to upset what your dream is.
I get it.
You know what I'm saying?
But.
This economically is a good, is a good economic tool. For both places. For the ones that exist, hey, if you want to stay in business, under your special exception, you better come do something. And then when you want to go into M1, put this in an M1 zoning, man, I'll support it all day long. I'll vote for it 50 times. But I'm just saying, I've seen it over the 65 years that, the cities, or 60 years, whatever, and it's just ruined our city. It's ruined it. We don't have a, we don't have a glorious M1 district, or a C1 district that's really clean with just commercial. We don't have a R1 district in the city, Harbor Heights. Long Point Road, it used to be R1, boom, now it's R3, and it's got a complex sitting on the corner. That's just not the way you zone. I'm sorry, it's just, it just don't, it don't work that way. You can change zoning upon agreement of all the zoning areas, like we did on North Atlantic. We went back, just made it all commercial because our residential, that's what it is. And left the commercial guys there. We just did 180 flip-flop on it. I could go on and on.
And that was a reverse, that was all commercial, and I think in some of the properties you listed, it was on commercial, those storage units moved in there, you know, Circle K, and the special exceptions were actually for the residential units.
But they came in after the residential, they had to come in on it.
And then, and then it flipped back, but I get it.
It's just, you know, you keep throwing special exceptions out there. At one time I made a comment, we're giving out special exceptions like we give away candy. It's like, and I felt so mad that night, that that's the way I felt, because they were just, I don't support them. I supported one, and I'm sorry I ever supported that one, but it's history. But I won't support this, I'm sorry. I will support it, changing it to the M1 district. I will support it, changing it to the M1 district with this ordinance. And yeah, you might get some nice warehousing up in there. And then these older places, we can apply this ordinance to existing, in certain zoning. I'm sure that could be done. Or just move in, tell the guy, hey, you got to paint, you got to fix these rust. Some of them, you can see through them. They're not even secure no more. The doors are falling off of them. That's, to me, is aesthetics and that comes under code enforcement. Doesn't come underneath a new ordinance to make it, make it pretty because you're just opening that box up for somewhere else to become ugly later on. And it's the way I feel, I'm sorry.
I just, I have a question. Can we go back to the map, the zoning map on here? When you were talking about Central and part of it being the town center, isn't that east of the pink, the, that would be R2? I mean, I'm sorry, C1, the red? And the pink now is the lumber and there's all warehouses here. And on the other side, the other side is the big building that was, I forget who, who it was.
AJP.
That was.
SpaceX is in there now.
And then next to that, on the other side, is a giant parking lot. And then, I mean, that's already has warehouses and everything there. Brown circle has all warehouses in there.
Right, right.
So the part that you're talking about for the town center would be east of the.
It would be east of Commerce Avenue.
Yes.
That's all area right in there is all kind of programmed for your town center, across the street, both sides.
Where the, where the lumberyard is?
Yes. The lumberyard wants to do it. He wants to, he wants to sell out. If the lady sold the trailer park, he wants to sell his, too. But that's, that's his opinion, you know, that's him to do that. But from Commerce Avenue.
From where the lumberyard is.
Right.
East to A1A or North Atlantic, that's where the big trailer park is. And that's the land we're looking at to be the town center. When, back in the C, this pink area, there's already warehouses and everything back there.
That's commercial, or that's back over in Imperial, behind, over by the brewery, over in that area, yes. That's, that's not in your town center area. That's already established. It's an area that's already been established through special exceptions, some of it. The whiskey place is in there on special exception, the beer place is in there on. So those are all special exceptions that have been put in there. But yes, it is commercial. The big SpaceX building, that was built on a commercial frontage of A1A years and years ago. That was built for a shopping center. But NASA rented it when it was being constructed. So it is, it is what it is. That was on, that's on Astronaut. That faces your commercial district. That is on Central. It does a butt central on the west end of it, or the east, whatever, north end of it. But I'm talking about that area from North Atlantic down to Commerce. That is all unstruck ground except for the lumberyard. And the.
And there's buildings next to the, if you go west.
Well, I know where, I know where all of it is. I know what, but I'm saying, let's say the Mobile Home Park, east of the lumberyard. Let's say east of the ditch.
Right.
It's all untouched property.
And that's where I thought the town center was going to go.
And then you're going to open the door and let me come down there and build warehouses. I don't think that's going to work. And, and the economic tool of this will not, and I say, I can probably say it because there's been more people, myself included, after the warehouses that are in disrepair, to do something with them. And they don't do anything with them. Why? Because I don't have a ticket book to stand there and write them a ticket.
Well, and they.
Tell them they need to fix them.
My other comment is, I think between the, what was, the ordinance we already had and the new design standards, for that, back to Central, for, anything would be an improvement on what's there now. I mean, just.
Right.
In that area, well, you're missing my point, I think. We can take this ordinance and apply it in a fashion to the existing buildings, if you want to do that, I think.
We can make the man that owns, I'm just using him for an example. We can make him bring that place that he has up to these standards?
Up to a standard that's a lot better than what they are, but not to, not to a brand-new building, unless you want to give him that special exception to do it again.
Well, you can't make anyone bring it up to a brand-new building. I mean.
No, no.
Pick your favorite building in Cape Canaveral. It's going to get old.
Did I, did I not say that?
Well, I know, but you're picking on special exceptions about aging infrastructure. It just, it's not a special exception.
What else are you going to do?
You enforce your code, but the code is written in a way to keep things, you know, in code and, and safe.
And tell me.
The structures are safe. So if there's unsafe structures or if there's activities that, you know, law enforcement issue, you know, whether it's code enforcement or law, that mechanism's there. But the fact that these properties are, are sitting there and they're tired, somebody's doing the math on them and they're waiting for new investment. And to think that if I have a, a, a storage unit in one of these, that if I redevelop, whether I'm in M1 or in C2, I need to adhere to these new codes to conform. And this is a, this is a way for, I think, when you do the math on the available opportunities, that would be an interesting exercise and I might do it. It's, there's only a handful of opportunities. When you think about who is there today for not, the impact, I think, is going to be on a few parcels, but those few parcels will be very beneficial to the city. I think that that's the point. Market won't support every parcel being, you know, storage. I don't believe that, that's a prediction. But I think that when you actually look at what's likely to happen, all I see happening is improvements. I see new development. And that's, that's a good thing.
But you're still setting precedents.
You just said something that.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm for private property rights. I mean, we sit up here and we tell people what they can and can't do. And I think it is compatible if we want to pull that card. These storage units are beautiful, you know, it's written in a way to where it's, it's nice. And the special exception maybe was poorly executed in the past. Maybe, I think when you see special exception, Mayor, you just say, you might as well just make it allowed because they're giving it away like candy. But I think that we can think about ways to, you know, attend these board meetings and say, hey, you know, aesthetics matter.
I don't speak at those board meetings. I'm, I'm.
I know that you don't, but, but maybe that, maybe that's something we can start doing and saying, hey, we wrote this and incorporate photographs, as the, as the city attorney said. But there's tired properties here and this is an opportunity to redevelop them. We get two readings at this. I wish that we could separate them and, you know, make the improvements in M1 because I think we do all agree on that. But I'll think about it. I think there's good points made.
But you, you made a, you made a comment that all these properties won't do that. Well, that's the problem. All these properties won't do it. You'll have something nice here, then you'll have a warehouse. You'll have a, maybe a nice retail with condos on top. Me, I wouldn't move in that condo right with a warehouse next door. I'm sorry.
I think that they've addressed any.
How do you figure the developer?
No, where I'm saying, wherever, whatever is there now, wherever this warehouse comes in, that one parcel will be an improvement. That's what I'm saying.
But where's it going to go?
Wherever it goes. It doesn't, that new development will be new development.
Boom, you just dropped a spot on the, on the map. That's spot zoning. I'm sorry, spot zoning. It's what you call spot zoning. Now, you gave them.
Spot zoning is different.
No, it's not. You're putting something in a, in an area that it don't belong in, that's what it is. So the other fashion is, as a, as a developer, somebody that you're trying to get into the, to the city to bring some nice projects in here, you have, for instance, Mr. Gall tore down the golf course and he's going to build a nice project. Very, very great improvement. The next developer, I, I know a guy right now, just called me today and talking to me about the trailer park. I said, it's hot, it's ready to go. He's, he's probably going to try it. But a, a big developer like these guys that's after that park, he'd go in and buy those warehouses on the corner of Central and Brown Circle and rip them down and build a nice affordable town center there. When, when it starts happening, it'll explode. It'll happen. And those, those pieces of property have become what you could say, parking lots. You're gone, it's gone. And somebody's going to build a nice project there. Those warehouses aren't going to stay there forever. The guy that owns them now hasn't fixed them by now, he don't intend on fixing them. He's going to dump them. He's going to milk them, dump them. A developer comes in and is going to build you a nice project there. You know, you're not going to build another warehouse there. Warehouses, they're, they're, they're money hogs, man. They, they, they're nothing but money. And if you just, like, a few, don't want to mention names, they're milking them. But you got some people that take care of theirs because they're proud of what they got.
So you want to see the ones that are in the C2 district not have an opportunity to stay there once investment comes into this area? That they'll get bought out?
They'll, they'll probably get bought out, the ones that, now, you didn't pay attention. There's people that take care of them and they're, they're financially very stable with them, so they take care of them. The ones that are gone, the guy, probably dump them. It's like anything that gets old, you just milk it, you know, as long as it's, as long as it's, you keep eating from it. You can, and you keep it. Then when you get tired of it, you don't take care of it. It's not worth fixing up to sell, so you sell as is and boom, it's gone. A developer will come in, that's development. But this, this ordinance, I don't think will help those people develop. It's not going to do it. Otherwise, they'd do it without this ordinance. This ordinance has nothing to do with those people and their building the way it is. Not going to give him the incentive to clean it up. You got warehouses building that built long after all those warehouses were sitting there. Central Avenue right on the corner, very nice. Man storage, very nice, well-kept. In fact, I tried to buy it, but couldn't swing it. But if, if you keep stuff up and nice, yeah, it's nice to look at. I don't mind looking at those all day long, drive up. But you drive down and see the other ones that were mentioned, yeah, they're an eyesore. Why are they an eyesore? They weren't kept up, they weren't. Hey, you got a special exception, you came in under, you got rules you're supposed to keep. That's been the lack of, that's the problem. And putting it down on Center Avenue, that's right where you want to do a town center? And that's where, you cannot stop me if I want to do it. Because you did it for him over there and I'll see you in court if you don't let me do it. That's the way it works. So we'd be very careful in what we do. I know what I'm going to do. Because I've lived it for 60 years here and I've seen it, so. Not a pretty sight when you drive up and down. No, there's a condominium sitting out there on the highway that was supposed to be commercial buildings or a warehouse sitting in the middle of that little residential district across from a $2 million home. Not good.
Well, I think that your points are off. I think just we'll disagree on the private property rights alone, but, you know, it just comes down to centrally planning it. I think that this is written in a way that'll address a lot of those old issues. I'm, I'm going to support it maybe, and I will dig in deep and, and listen. And I think you do bring wisdom to the table being here. And, and, and upon next reading, I might change my mind. Maybe we get some more public comments up here. But I did see the Planning and Zoning Board recommended it. And I was, I think I was at that meeting, I don't, back in August. I'd like to go back and watch that meeting as well and see how that vote went. I was there, I don't, I don't recall, but today.
Mr. Dickey.
I'm going to hold. Support, thank you.
Care to comment on that, how the vote went?
You going to make a motion?
Actually, may have been.
I didn't go to me.
I think it was like, I want to say four to one or five to one, if I recall. But don't hold me to that.
This is.
The important thing is, what does the council want to do?
Yep.
What would you like to do?
I'm finished with my comments. You want to go to the public?
Public hearing.
Well, it's currently written, I, I can't support it. I'm not saying at the second reading that I won't change, but right now, I'm against.
I'm against it.
So there's three views that are against it?
Yep, very much so.
In its entirety or just the C2?
This could be for M1.
This ordinance, the way it's written and how it's written and what it's written for, I'm, I'm not going to support it. But I will go along with changing it to an M1 requirement. I don't have a problem with that.
Perhaps.
We could strike the C2 requirement and leave the rest of the ordinance that would only pertain to M1? And then move that on to the next, you know, next meeting? And you can decide whether you want to take final action or not? Is that a possibility?
I'm in agreement with that.
All right. But I won't support it the way it's written for, intended what it's here for, because I won't support it. I think it's, 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 it's an eyesore. And these people got to drive down that road every day to look at the eyesores that are already existing with all the old buildings that are uncapped there. Some of them are trying to fix them up. But I don't have a problem with rewriting that ordinance, striking two out of it and putting M1 in that place, and I'll support it then. I don't have a problem with that. But that's where, that's where it belongs.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'm not going to make a motion. That's the way I feel. But I'll, I'll leave it up to the board. If somebody wants to make that a motion, we'll make a motion and move forward.
Anthony, your recommendation is that we strike through it, but when we bring it back on this second reading, would we still have an opportunity to vote the C2 in at that point?
C2's getting struck out of us.
The motion today, it seems like there is support is to, to strike out the C2. Is that what you recommended?
This, under what today, this motion or this ordinance will die on the first reading with three to two vote, if that's what it is.
Sure.
And Anthony is suggesting striking C2 and putting M1 in it. I heard.
Not adding the C2 special exception.
Just not adding the section, adding the use in the C2 zoning district. Everything else would stay. And if the city council wants to reconsider the C2 zoning district at the next meeting.
Okay.
You can have that discussion. You know, I would just tell you right now, you know, right now, your M1 zoning district, you know, doesn't have any design and operational requirements for these, these types of facilities. And who knows what the future may hold? And maybe someday it'll come, someone might come in and rezone Commerce Street into industrial. And then what do you do? You have no design or operational requirements. And the use is currently permitted.
Is there a way to include that in this?
It would run with the district.
Existing? Existing?
Well, the existing are existing. They're non-conforming. They, they don't meet the design requirements. They don't, you know, and the ones in the M1 zoning district may be allowed use, but they don't meet design requirements.
Could you legally, or could you apply something of that nature to those existing non-conformities?
Only if they redevelop. If they redevelop. If they want to rebuild them.
The standard non-conforming rules would apply, that they can exist in compliance with the laws of the day when they were approved.
And they'd have to rebuild. Well, I don't, you know, that's property rights, like he's talking about, which I'm very strong on that. But it'd be taking away their rights to do it if.
This ordinance doesn't take away non-conforming rights. This, this ordinance establishes new design and operational requirements for these types of uses, for new ones. Now, if an existing non-conforming one wants to come in and they can't expand because the non-conforming section prohibits the expansion, well, they have an alternative. They could redevelop and they can redevelop to the new standards and they get the cake and eat it, too, right? It provides another option.
By not expanding, that would mean the footprint or the amount of units? What would you call not expanding?
Well, the, the, the non-conforming section addresses expansion of size and footprint, structural amendments. I mean, there are a whole host of issues that we look at to determine whether a non-conforming use and structure can be modified.
You would look at what the proposal is and what of the proposal would not comply with today's requirements? If they're proposing doing something that is irrelevant, they're allowed to do that. But if it's against today's requirements, what they're proposing, to the extent that it's against today's requirements, has to be towards today's compliance requirements. it's against today's requirements, has to be towards today's compliance requirements.
Confused.
Yeah, it is.
I just wanna make one, I just wanna make one thing very clear. If we go ahead and say, and the council says, okay, just an M1, that's where we're going to allow these. You are, for all intents and purposes, locking in all of the other ones that are currently in the city, throughout the city, in the commercial districts, as non-conforming uses. And you will be looking at those for a long time, as is. Yes, we can go in and work with our IPMC, which the council adopted, and we can go in there and make sure that they meet the, they are maintaining, maintain, they're painted, there's, you know, we can, we can, we will do that. But for those uses to go away or build new structures, or you're gonna be looking at those where they are today for a while, if the council decides that M1 is the way to go.
I don't get your point. We're gonna be looking for a while anyway. They're there.
But that's the current situation.
That's the current situation.
My take is, if somebody comes in here, I won't mention any particular ones, but somewhere down around brown circle we're talking about or whatever, and I got 10 million bucks and I'm gonna build me a $40 million complex, I'm gonna buy those units, you don't think that guy's gonna sell those units? They're gone. That's what I'm saying. They'll eventually, attrition, everything works if you work with it. But when you start opening Pandora's box and bringing it back and allowing it again, you're gonna have another 50 years to look at them or 60 years to look at them. Yeah, they were nice when they were built, but they weren't taken care of. Same old history, same story. I think a developer, you get, you just start getting a nice, and we got it already, with most gonna do is retail and mixed use over there. That's gonna start, and you're gonna have developers, I know, I was already talked to today, I was gonna mention that to you today and forgot.
Can we make?
That developer might be gone in a couple of months.
Can we make a motion, I'm not sure, to keep the C2 and add the M1 until the next reading so we can research it a little more? Or does it have to be one or the other? I'm just asking, Anthony or somebody.
I will support it. Well, can we make a motion?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that there are not three council members that are willing to move this ordinance forward with adding the use to C2. So if that's the case, and you just wanna let the ordinance just die, then, you know, we won't consider it any further. No action is necessary. On the other hand...
Thank you.
If you wanna, if you like the rest of the ordinance related to the M1, we can strike C2 from the current draft that you have before you, and you could move this ordinance on to second reading, but it only addresses M1.
Okay, gotcha.
And then at second reading, you can, you know, reevaluate where you stand next month and decide whether you wanna adopt it finally or make further modifications, including reconsidering C2. But what I'm hearing right now is...
I gotcha.
There are three votes to move this to second reading with C2 being incorporated into the ordinance.
But we could, at the second reading...
Reconsider it, sure, at the second meeting.
Have the C2 reconsidered.
Why?
You wouldn't have, I mean, it's up to the council, but if you move this forward with M1 only, then next month, you can consider just adopting the M1 ordinance as it's written and not take up C2 again. But I'm hearing right now, there's three council members that do not support adding storage facilities as a, as a use in the C2 zoning district.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony. It dies.
Okay, I mean, you can take public input?
Oh, public input?
You open up the public input, you can, again, let it die and not take any action or?
Approve the modification.
Move it with a modification.
We need a motion for it to go forward.
Right, yes.
Okay, so anybody else have any other comments they wanna make before we go to Hearing none, we'll open public participation. Anybody? I do have a card.
Yeah, I'm Douglas Raymond. I live at 7048 Civila Court, which is a residential district, but at the end of C2. Now, as president of the association, I've canvassed some of our residents, and they're against having storage buildings in front of them. We've lived there now for 15 years with what we've got, and we'll live with that. As far as storage buildings and the map that I've seen on C2, I'm not aware of any inside storage that's in C2 right now. And I don't think we ought to adopt it. We've had enough, we have enough, we have enough problems with zoning in this city already where we've got multi-use, and that's come over time. And I don't think we ought to add any more restrictions to the C2 area.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll close public hearing. Nobody else? We'll close public hearing and bring it back to us. We either have a motion or we don't get a motion.
I am gonna, I'm going for it. Divine intervention here. Yeah, I move that we support this ordinance. I think it's the right thing to do. As written, I think staff addressed all the issues. I don't think that the fear that we talked about is happening. I think it will move us in the right direction. We'll see new investment for all the reasons mentioned. And I move that we adopt this ordinance as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1, 2020. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Against.
Mayor Hoag?
Against.
Councilmember Kellam?
For.
Councilmember Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
Against.
Give it a shot. Now, may I make another motion to strike through the C2? To address what I think our city attorney brought forth as a valid issue, that we don't have anything written?
No problem with it, you can do what you need.
I move that we strike through the C2 districts and adopt the rest as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to strike the C2 from the ordinance 01, 2020 and add M1. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
M1's already there. M1's already in the ordinance, but...
To adopt the new design code and the requirements laid here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. You can call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Against.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember Kellam?
For.
Councilmember Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
Against.
Pass three to two. I think, I think they belong in M1, and it doesn't hurt to put a little heavier criteria on these things. And M1 district, that's where they belong.
I feel that...
If they're built correctly and into this ordinance, I think they'll be, but we'll have a...
I feel that we have an urban planner now, and that I think that when we're talking about zoning and rezoning, that some of these things should go back to our urban planner to take a look at that and do the research. That's why I voted against.
I voted against because I think we need to look into it a little bit more. The city is actually moving forward, not saying this won't move the city forward, but I like what I'm seeing about the way A1A is starting to develop. And I know what the residents, where I live, in that area, what they wanna see, and it's not...
This is an M1, Mike.
Yeah, well, yeah. But right now, I just not, will not support it until we are able to study a little bit more.
Just realize where your M1 district's at.
Yes. But it's just something that I would like our urban planner, who works with the zone...
But at least that's what's out there to where we can...
Yes.
It's there, but... All righty, anybody have anything they wanna say publicly before we go to the council reports? We've covered our agenda, we went through that. So, council, just do reports. Mr. Rendles is in Tallahassee lobbying for you as we sit here tonight, so... There's a few items that are gonna hurt the city. We're gonna be probably losing control of how we can control bubs or air bubs or...
Vacation rentals.
Vacation rentals, as you wanna call them, which is, I think they're kinda out of control sometimes anyway, but, you know.
He has that meeting tonight at 9:00 PM. Rocky will be going to the meeting at 9:00 PM about the vacation rentals, and then he's going to speak at that one.
I think, you know, I mean, there does erode your home rule little by little, so I don't know. I don't have anything...
I have something.
Okay. Only thing I wanted to say is pedestrian safety is a big issue there. Everybody knows about the fatality that happened in Satellite. I met with Commander Walters, and he expressed to me that citations and infractions are up for the city of Cape Canaveral, so the Sheriff Department is actively, proactively enforcing traffic laws. There is a current grant, a pedestrian safety grant funded by DOT and IPTM. The officers are able to work overtime and actually do pedestrian safety and other moving violations to make our city safer and State Road A1 a lot safer. They are also doing high visibility enforcement, like I said before, traffic enforcement and citations are up in the city as compared to 2017, 2018. So I wanna give kudos to the Sheriff Department for the work that they do.
Can I ask a question, Mike? On this pedestrian, how, what kind, I don't know, you kind of...
Pedestrian safety grant is Commander Walters is here, he can basically say a couple words.
My question was gonna be, what do we do about, okay, I didn't know he was...
Yeah, he's back there.
What are we doing about pedestrians that run out in the middle of the road and they're jaywalking? Let's put it...
And bicyclists going into the suicide lane.
Are we...
Yeah, I mean, you can issue them a traffic citation, but, I mean, honestly...
You'd be awful busy, I know.
You've been in this...
You'd be busy, I know.
It's been an ongoing problem.
But that word gets around quick.
Well, it's a very transient community.
Warnings? How about a warning, just a warning? Next time I see you? But that word gets around quick.
If we witness it, that's what the grant...
Yeah, I know, you have to witness it, I realize that.
High visibility enforcement grant, that's with DTM and the Florida Department of Transportation. So, and as a result of that, I believe I've provided you those numbers, and we've had over 600, close to 700 stops over that time during the grant. And so, the deputies are doing their jobs, but again, the question revolves around pedestrians going out in traffic, and we could give them a citation or a warning, but that's if we see it. We have to be able to see it and take enforcement action.
But, I don't know, it's bad out there, I think.
No, it is. And it's not gonna go away. When you look at Cape Canaveral, we talked about this tonight, and I believe I talked to Councilman Raymond about it as well, is you look at the stretch of A1A throughout Brevard County, and I challenge anybody to say that anywhere else besides Cape Canaveral, we've got the highest congestion of transient traffic, the cruise terminals and everywhere else, coming off the heart of 528. They start here in Cape Canaveral, go south, Cocoa Beach, but once you get down to Satellite Beach and Melbourne Beach, a lot of that is residential traffic. So the majority of people that we stop don't even live in Cape Canaveral, don't even live in Brevard County, for that matter. So when you get millions and millions of people, that visible enforcement is our biggest deterrent on A1A. And we've addressed it at our supervisors' meeting, but when we have a transient community that we have, I mean, again, Cape Canaveral's gone a long ways. Back from the 90s, when I came out here, to now has come a long way. And my props to the leadership here in the city and the residents for not putting up with that. But we still have a lot of bicyclists that don't have modes of, that's their only mode of transportation, and they rely on it. They're not doing it for exercise, but that's how they get to and from anywhere they need to go. So we're focusing on it. We're pretty hardcore about it. And the numbers show it. I mean, our numbers are continuously up. Each of those categories from citations and warnings with pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles are up over 30% as compared to last year. So, and our last traffic homicide was, what, over a year ago? So that's saying a lot of good stuff about City Cape Canaveral and our enforcement. But we're not gonna let up just because the numbers are up.
I'm glad to see it. I welcome it with open arms, personally.
Appreciate your efforts, I'm sorry.
There's not a day goes by that you don't see five or six people running out...
No doubt.
You know? I got it.
I got you. And then you could ride the side streets, and you'll see people riding their beach cruisers and oblivious dog traffic, not even stopping at stop signs, and they're supposed to stop at stop signs. But it's a challenge for us, but we're doing our best.
Thank you for being, appreciate it. Thanks for speaking, sir.
I'd like to add on. I went to the board for Space Coast League of Cities, and afterward, the mayor of Satellite Beach asked the mayors to come back to speak about the accident that happened. And I went instead, since you weren't there, mayor. And I did hear, it's very interesting, because he just wanted to see what everybody thought about the whole A1A issue. And they claim in Satellite Beach that when they came out and put those side stop things there with the yellow lights, that they had requested the red lights, red flashing lights, not yellow flashing lights. So when the yellow flashing lights were put up by DOT, they were a little alarmed. And they said, we want those red flashing lights. And I think that it looks like they're going to be able to get the red flashing lights instead of the yellow. And that's, that's what we've requested, and the step further was to go over, over the head. So let's see if we get it. Anyway, see what the TPO made me, we're right up there. We've spoken enough about this over and over. Anyway, there was really no other news, and I went to the dinner afterward, and we did have the installation of the officers and the board, and that was a very nice event at the L3 Harris Company. And it was so interesting, the man that was vice president last year, young African-American man, and he is now the president. And I was very happy to speak to him and see, that's quite, quite a promotion that he had in a very short time.
From Paul, who was the vice president?
I can't remember. He was the speaker last year, and again, this year, he's now the president. He's a wonderful speaker, a Cornell grad and everything. And I'm just so impressed with the whole program and the film that they show about everything that they're doing with the modulars that they're doing that's going to be on Mars, to do some of that, scavenging some of the mess that's up in space. But the most important thing that we have to talk about is Kimetsukki. The Council of Local Authorities for International Relations is a federal organization in Japan. And they are sponsoring, they want to sponsor 10 people from Cape Canaveral to go to Kimetsukki. And they need to hear from us that we're willing to do this. They want to, with this grant that they've applied through CLAIR, it's C-L-A-I-R, the cost of lodging and airfare would be taken care of for 10 people. They would like the mayor and city council and some of the host families and some of the staff to go. They're coming here again for the third year, and some of us have hosted them several times now. And I think, if you think about this, they sent their middle school children to us. They didn't know us. They trusted us with their most vulnerable population, and that really says something about the Japanese. If we say no, and if we say we aren't going to support this, this would really be considered culturally rude. I've worked with Japanese since 1980, and this would be very, very rude for us not to support this program and for us not to say, yes, we would love to go. And they would like us to go for the special event, it's at the end of October this year. And I think we need to say, yes, we will do this, or no, we don't want to support this program. But we need to give them an answer now. Now. And if we don't go, they will consider this rude.
Thank you for bringing that up. Are there other members of this council who would like to attend? I know that the Ramens were also host families, and I understand that Angela and Doug would both be interested in going. Any other council members?
I don't want to go personally, but I would go, but I have told my wife 100 times, I'm not flying to Thailand no more with her. She goes home back and forth, and I will not fly no more. I had millions of air miles probably, and I'm tired of flying, and I told her, and I could see me going to Japan and telling her, "I don't go, I'm not taking her home back going out." So, that's my reason I'm not going to go, because I've refused probably seven times for her.
It's a long trip.
And it's just, I have nine trips I've made over there and back, and probably 12 to 13 to Africa, so I've had enough air miles. I'm tired of it, so I'm not doing it more.
Well, I agree with Angela. I think it'd be rude for the city not to, and the members of the council, the council I do not like to go, I propose opening it up to citizens of our city to take the place of council people that wouldn't fill those spots, and let those, the city, the grant they have, pay for their lodging and pay for their airfare, and I'm pretty sure there are citizens in the Cape Canaveral that would jump at that opportunity.
We would have to clarify that with them, because the request was very specific for mayor, council, staff, and host families.
Their meritors could go. They'd probably jump, but...
Mayor, council, staff, and host families, yes.
Host families.
Host families.
But we could reach out to them and ask them if they would be willing to oblige other city residents. Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay. I stand corrected, okay?
Councilman Morrison, did you say that you will go to Japan?
I did not, but I looked at it, and it'd be a thrilling trip to go. I've never been, and I looked at those timeframes, and it honored very kind them to ask, but unfortunately, I cannot make that trip, so thank you.
Councilmember Kellum?
I can't fly that far and that long, and it's an interesting trip, but I just can't do it this year. I have too much to learn about the city before I go to Japan.
There is one staff member that I would be interested in sending, and that would be our cultural and community affairs director, Molly. I think that they would enjoy having her there, learning from what she can teach them, and I think she can bring a lot back to us as well. So, if there's consensus from the council, we'll respond to them that both Ramens and Molly would be interested in attending.
Also, Daniel, if you ever...
I did ask Daniel about that, and Daniel, correct me if I'm wrong, you weren't interested in going this year?
I mean, I would like to go eventually. I'm not sure if this year is the appropriate year for me for personal reasons.
So, certainly, we could ask, we could ask about Rocky, too. And I also want to, I want to clarify a couple things. This is a grant program that has not been approved yet. They need the names so they can submit for the grant. If it's approved, then it can happen. And I also want to specify that we are in no way saying that we intend to reciprocate and pay for their travel back, so we'll make sure that we diplomatically get that message across that we don't have a grant program like they have for, that would pay for them, for us to reciprocate. But we very graciously would accept for those three and any others that we hear about. But if we're going to hear about others, we need to know by the end of this week.
The thing of it is, I think that we could research this, and possibly there are other groups that would support a grant in the future.
Yes.
If we were to look into this to reciprocate.
That would be part of the response.
I know friends to friends and many international groups, so it's a possibility that we might be able to reciprocate someday.
I do hear the consensus from the council about who is interested in going and what our message is about reciprocation.
And Angela was going to check and see if they would possibly open it up to citizens, if that is...
Yeah, and you know, I know Brenda Supranot also was host family two years in a row, Brenda and Joshua. I just have to mention that.
Okay. Ask about that as well, and we'll ask Molly to reach out to them about other members of the community.
Thank you.
Go.
Yes, I had the pleasure of going to Jacksonville last weekend to the Florida League of Cities Institute for Elected Officials, and I learned a lot. It was interesting. It was, it was an honor to represent our city there and to find, and to realize how much we have in our little city and how much our staff is phenomenal and how much we get done in our city with the small amount of employees we have. I thought it was really interesting, interesting, and I learned a lot, and I went to the directors after I came back and asked a lot of questions. And I'm looking forward to more education so I can do a good job as a council person. I did, they talked a lot about home rule and how important that is to cities, and I was wondering if I could get a consensus from the council to direct staff that maybe on the weekly notices that we put out to the citizens, if we could have something in there about how home rule is affecting cities, because I don't think a lot of people realize that they are taking control away from our city. You know, as far as the short-term rentals, the Verizon towers that are coming...
Tree cutting.
Tree cuttings. I mean, it's just, it's more and more, and I don't think that the citizens are aware, and you know, maybe put the legislators' names in there that they need to contact, and if it would come on the weekly update maybe from, to the citizens. So, other than that, I just want to thank our staff for doing a wonderful job. I'm so proud of our city, and to be a council person for our city is an honor, and that's all I got.
Do I have anything else?
I'm going to just go fast on this. Thanks to all the staff. Lisa, thank you for getting back to me. Appreciate your help and patience working through something. Dave, you got some questions? Thank you very much with some ordinance issues. Jim on the wastewater, thank you very much. You guys, I'll delay to respond, and you're always fast. Give me a guilt trip there, but thank you all very, very much. And Zach and Jeff, the sea oats are coming. That's a get ready. That's always a fun event that is coming. I think we got 10,000 oats this year. Looking forward to that. We've been, every year, it's faster and faster because so many volunteers show up, so maybe here in the soon, if we got a little money left over in the budget, we'll double down next year, so, to meet the demand, but get out there early if you want to help, and it's always a good event. And Representative Saroy, District 51 here, state of Florida, obviously, as we've heard, they're all in session. He did reach out echoing what Mayor Pro Tim Brown brought up with the tragedy that happened, and he, he and I had spoken in the past. I know Councilmember Raymond had spoke up at the legislative's delegation meeting provided the port, and I know that every one of these council members have been unified in a message and resolution on what we expect from A1A, and I know that we have people who serve on boards and to make that known, persistent in loud winds. We're small in Cape Canaveral, but we're mighty, and we will get that message across. But I just want to thank Representative Saroy. He did say that he knew that this was near and dear to our heart, and he would go up, and within seconds, I think it was even on a weekend, thank you very much, Todd, for rallying and putting together and getting it out to all the council members, all of the issues as they are today, and hopefully, we hear some good news in the mix with all the home rule things that are scaring us. Hopefully, A1A is a priority for all these reasons, and compliments for some residents came in from our fire department and our sheriff's department, so hats off to you. Both of them are on response times. That's very, very encouraging. And last but not least, Todd, thank you very much for holding it all together. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I don't have much to add. They covered everything, but I want to thank you, Commander, for the attention we got the last couple weeks. I noticed it, and I hope it continues. And Jim, a special thanks to you for the bus stop this morning. Get concerned when I see that kind of stuff, and I don't know if you all noticed, there's a little graffiti starting in the city again, so take note, kind of keep an eye out for it and report it so we can get it taken care of. But somebody's been damaging our bus shelters one after the other, so breaking the glass in them and graffiti, and we just kind of keep an eye if you see it, call the number. So, I don't have anything to say. Mr. Johnny, you got any report? Nothing? Mr. Morley has the floor.
Just a few things. As council knows, we are, we've renegotiated, starting to renegotiate again with Sherri Down Park with Brevard Public Schools. We've met with the school superintendent. He's taking the concept to the, to his board about a purchase of that property, and if we purchased it, it would be at, at an appraisal rate. There's only one appraisal comp out there right now, and that's the property that the county sold to the port out there for the, about 10 acres or so. So, they understand because it's conditioned property that can only be used for passive recreation, those comps are very limited, and going into it with his board, he will explain that to them. We have a meeting with Commissioner Lober on Monday, I believe, Lisa, to talk about the county's position there. Our goal would be eventually to ask the TDC to possibly fund a capital improvement there, a small building, maybe 2,000, 3,000 square feet. That could be used for educational things geared towards K through 6, but also possibly be leased to things like maybe if a public, a member of the public wanted to have a small wedding reception there in this building there. So, we'll be reporting back to the council about that. We're going to have the first coffee with the city manager next Wednesday and be 9:00 to 10:00 AM at Manity Sanctuary Park. We have the city hall open house coming up Friday, February 14th, Valentine's Day from 1:00 to 3:00, and we're doing it again on Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 on February 15th. That's so that everybody who maybe is working on Friday could make it on Saturday. We have the 2020 Strategic Planning Retreat coming up. Council is aware of that. It's on March 25th at the Radisson. There will be one-on-one meetings with the council with Dr. Tom Freho as in previous years. I'll be attending the FCCMA Institute Interactive Workshop for Florida City County Managers on February 6th and 7th. I'll be in Daytona those two days. And lastly, as Councilmember Morrison pointed out, the sea oats planning, it is this on February 1st. Is it 8:00 AM, Lisa? Starts at 8:00 AM, and that's at Sherri Down Park. Thank you. That's all, sir.
Very good evening.
No report.
No report.
Anybody have anything before we close? Meeting adjourned. Thanks for showing up.